Cloudy rainy day, but it's still a great day. Let us bow a moment for a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for just another day. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our beloved city of Nacogdoches. Father, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to each listen politely as others share their point of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than individuals trying to promote our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie ship in this room and work together on our shared mission. Help us to clearly understand the objective and expectation of this meeting and stay focused on these things. We ask this in your name, amen. The meeting is now called to order. Would you mind standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
I do have a copy. Thank you. Madam Secretary, is anybody open for? All right, thank you. Agenda item four, items to remove from the consent agenda. Is there anyone would like to pull an item or discuss an item? If not, could we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Okay, thank you. The regular agenda. Item six eight. Consider approval of multiple contracts buying between the city of Nacogdoches and Safe Built Texas, S and J Fire Protection and Harden and Associates for customer service inspections, service and not to exceed amount of $75,000 each. Assistant Director of Public Works, Case Opelman.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Case Opelman, Assistant Director of Public Works. Coming to you this evening, asking you to approve these multiple contracts with Safe Built Texas, S and J Fire Protection and Harden and Associates for customer service inspection services. The T C Q, Texas Commissional Environmental Quality, requires cities to inspect existing and new businesses and perform customer service inspections. This is basically to identify any cross contamination sources with the public water supply. The C S I's are normally completed when a new building receives a certificate of occupancy. However, many of these commercial businesses that we have in this town are obviously quite old and predate some of these requirements. There is no grandfathering with this program because it is a health and safety issue. And so, a couple of years ago, the city was fined by T C Q for not mandating these C S I's be done. At that time, they gave us a list of 120 businesses that we were to basically retroactively get C S I's on and get them up to code. We did that with one of these companies that we're speaking about tonight, S and J Fire Protection helped us with that. And that was successful in allowing us to get that fine greatly reduced by T C Q. And at this point, we are trying to continue the effort of getting the next 1,200 of these businesses in compliance. We've already gotten all the commercial businesses on the list to get an R P Z, which is a reduced pressure zone backflow preventer, which is the kind of U shaped device that you see outside a lot of these businesses on the water line. It's between the water meter and the first fixture of the of the business. So, the first point of consumption is beyond this prevention device. But we still have to make sure that there's no cross contamination within the buildings such as, you know, a sink with a hose attached to it or attached to the faucet, you know, laying in a sink full of water which could then siphon back into the system. So, that's what the C S I's are really about for the purposes of this project. In May, on May 18th, we received proposals from three companies that do these all the time. We have the ability to do these in-house, but with the volume, it's just not something that we can handle on our own. So, all three of these firms which submitted proposals are highly qualified and you should have received a scoring sheet that we that we as staff came or we had a final scoring sheet that basically showed all three of these companies to be very similar in qualifications. S and J, again, had already done prior business with the city. So, where you see, you know, zeros for the other two businesses, it was really only because they hadn't worked here before. We don't have experience with them where we have experience with S and J. So, it's not a knock on their qualifications at all. It's just part of the scoring criteria. So, all three of these, we feel are good choices to do this. And because we have so many to do, we're just recommending that we approve contracts for all three of these businesses so that we can get most, if not all of these, done within the next six to 12 months. And that, you know, when T C Q comes back in here for an inspection, we can show, hey, we've come a long, long way. If if we haven't already finished it, we're well on our way to getting completed with with this, you know, rectification of these deficiencies. So, each of these contracts, as was stated, will be in the amount of $75,000 each and we feel that's enough to get this project completed. So, I also have Ronnie Lyles, he's our Water Utilities Superintendent, but also our Program Manager for our Customer Service Inspections. He's available to answer any technical questions if you should have any. So, at this point, I will step aside and wait for public comment, if any.
Thank you, Case. Is there any public comment for this proposal? Is there any objections to this proposal? City Council, Jay, start from the end.
How frequently does T C E Q either require or recommend having these C S I's done?
So, the the service for the customer service inspections themselves are valid for 10 years.
10 years, okay.
Yes. The backflow prevention devices are an annual inspection. The the city is not required to do those. The businesses each have to complete that inspection and file it with the city.
Okay.
So, we can see if they've done it on time or not and we can go, you know, enforce, you know, that action at that time.
Okay.
The the customer service inspections are valid for a much longer period.
How long has it been since City of Nacogdoches has done these?
Well, we do them, we do them when a new building gets a certificate of occupancy. But we did the last 100, when we did the 120, that was in 2018.
Okay. Prior to that, though, how long had it been since we done the C S I's? You mentioned that we had been fined.
We had, and that was because we had not honestly kept up with it. It was, and understand that it was very common for those things to just get pushed to the wayside, not even just here in Nacogdoches, but across the state. So, it was not uncommon for that to happen. It was not right. But, you know, we and we got fined, which we should have, honestly. But at this point in time, we're, you know, moving forward and getting it, you know, taking care of the way it should have been taken care of.
This is back to get us, this basically to get us back to an even.
This is where we need to be.
Yeah.
This is to get us where we need to be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes. The, what you just mentioned about the the businesses completing the inspection on those devices? And then they have to file it with the city?
Yes.
Do we have an enforcement mechanism for that?
We do, and Ronnie could probably speak more to that. But, yes, we do.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ronnie Lyles, Water Utilities Superintendent. Yes, we actually have a backflow ordinance that has enforceable actions in that if the there's a procedure, if they do not have them inspected and the paperwork filed with us in a certain amount of time, then, you know, we send them a letter, send them a certified letter, and at that point, after that, if they don't comply, then the next step is shutting the water off.
Okay, so there there is a system in place to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Besides just, okay, awesome.
Yes.
And then another question that I had, Case, you mentioned that you can't do it all in-house and 1,200, I sound like a lot, particularly when you mentioned the six to 12 month timeframe. Is that timeframe from T C E Q or is that a self imposed timeframe?
It's a mixture of both. You know, they've they've been honest to get these, you know, completed since our first initial enforcement action. And so, you know, getting all of the backflow prevention devices installed last year, I believe was when we finally finished that up, and then getting to the point where we can get all those inspected along with all these C S I's, it's it's kind of self imposed in the, you know, sense that we're trying to get as far down the road as we can before they ask us again, hey, how you doing, you know?
Okay.
On that, on that program, so.
So, the devices are already on everybody and what's what's left is the C S I's?
Right. And the in the annual inspection of the R P Z's themselves.
Okay.
The customer service inspections, which is more interior to the building.
Okay.
Are are what we have to do right now, and those will last for about 10 years.
Okay.
Or that's how long they're valid for.
Right. And do you have any idea when T C Q is coming back? I mean, I guess they don't like to announce those things for obvious reasons.
Not always. We do have annual inspections.
They they come once every three years and we expect them sometime this year.
Okay, so the the plan, will they fine us again if we're not done with the 1,200?
If we don't show a marked improvement.
Okay.
I would expect one. I don't know that they will say, hey, you haven't finished every single one that we told you about, because it is a large volume. But I believe, and staff believes, that if we can show a good effort, you know, a good conscientious effort to remedy this situation, then they hopefully would not find us heavily. But, you know, showing that we're making the best effort we can is what we are aiming for. Because we don't want to, we don't want them to come back in and say, hey, y'all haven't done anything since we told you last time.
Right.
That wouldn't be a good day, I wouldn't think.
No.
So.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Ms. Ballinger?
Well, most of my questions have been answered, but I have just one more. Where are these contractors located?
S and J is actually, I believe, in Lufkin and and I think, I think Safe Built and Harden are both in the Dallas Fort Worth area.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one question. Now, we are not just giving each one of these 75,000, they're working about an hour, right?
It is an hourly contract and all three of these had very similar hourly rates, which was why we kind of felt good about giving them all, you know, the same thing. If one of them had been astronomically higher, we may have scaled their contract back a little bit. But these are all very, very uniform, kind of in their price structure. But to answer your question, yes, they are hourly. To give you an idea, when we did these the first time, I think we spent about $17,000 with S and J on 100 or so of them. So, it's about $170 per, and that was at a, I think, $120 per hour rate. So, average an hour and a half per, you know, inspection or so. Some are longer, some are shorter. But, you know, the 75,000 should get us where we need to be on getting them all done.
And who's going to schedule the three companies?
We will have them coordinate with our Water Utilities staff in getting all those, you know, lined out as far as the the list that we need to split up and getting them, you know, on the ground and moving.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for getting us caught up and for getting everybody safe.
Well, we're doing the best we can and it's Ronnie and his staff that that do the brunt of that. So, we're proud of them for doing it.
One other quick question, is this something that going forward you are, that you foresee city staff being able to do, conducting these C S I's?
The 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 goal would be.
Once we get caught up, anyway.
Yes, yeah. The the whole impetus for having these outside contractors coming in to help us is is due to the volume. We, when we had the the first list from T C Q of 120, I believe we had already done 20 or so by the time we got the contractor involved. So, we are able to do it. We have a couple of C S I, you know, certified staff members, not only in the Water Utilities Division, but some in the customer, in Customer Service Department as well. Ronnie is a licensed inspector. But yes, once we get caught up, so to speak, we anticipate being able to do these a lot more readily in-house.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If no more questions, could we get a motion for regular agenda item number six eight?
I so move.
A second.
We have a motion to approve regular agenda item six eight and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion is passed. Agenda item six B, receive mid-year report from Nacogdoches Convention and Tourism Director.
Hurry up. It's been going hard. Thank you. I broke it. Ooh, that looks scary. I did it.
I don't think anyone has ever had any problems with PowerPoint in their life. It's so miserable. That little circle is.
We could play taps like we've gone off air at midnight. When I emailed it to you?
Good idea. So smart.
Was it that to break out into interpretive dance?
No, fine, because I really wanna see that. I know we have some people who've been in bands before, I was thinking somebody could perform, you know?
There it is. Okay, are you gonna steer or do I steer or? No, thanks so much. Okay, so while gathering my materials for this report, I came across this ad that we ran and thought, how fitting, a ride to remember. This certainly describes this last year, if not a long strange trip for any grateful deadheads out there. So, one thing that we did so far this year is we shored up our branding. And while Nacogdoches Convention and Visitors Bureau remains our D B A name in all other places, we are now known as Visit Nacogdoches. And here you'll find a listing of our current staff and Board of Directors. Here's the slide that has our stated mission and purpose. Most people assume that we're funded similarly to other city departments through the general fund, which is not the case. This slide shows two goals, one to attract overnight visitors and the other being to promote tourism, which sort of falls in lockstep to the truth behind how we are funded. We are primarily funded through the restricted funds of hotel occupancy tax. And at that, even a portion of it. So, 72 and a half percent of remitted local hotel occupancy tax comes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for us to use. It is the restricted funds to be used for marketing and historic preservation primarily. But the neatest thing is that while we are funded through restricted funds, what we generate are both more restricted funds and money for the general fund. So, the tourists come in and stay in our hotels and generate more hotel occupancy tax, that's a restricted part. But while they're here, they bring their disposable income and they shop in our shops and they gas up at our gas stations and tip our waitstaff and that money goes into our general fund through sales tax. And in the year 2020, Governor Abbott's office shows us that direct traveler spending in the city of Nacogdoches, both local and state sales tax totaled, wait for it, it's a good number, 5.9 million. And the local part of that was just shy of 2 million. So, tourism is definitely an economic driver and we often get asked the question of why we focus on a 50 mile outer radius and why we, why we don't do more things for the residents. And this goes to show that that this is just our piece of the puzzle, is to bring in this, these outside entities into our destination so they can deposit funds, go home, and then we can enjoy those contributions with increased fire and police and trucks and our streets are paved and things of that nature. So, this is our current lodging landscape. We have 16 hotels that comprise 1,122 beds, 13 cabins, B and Bs, we refer to those as unique lodging options. And in the county, we have upwards of 89 active short term rentals. Of that 89, less than half of those fall within the city limits. So typically, each September, Visit Nacogdoches brings to council a very specific marketing plan which details strategies and metrics. But with so much up in the air this past time around, we really cut back to the bare bones and focused on the residual value found in our established brand identity and marketing campaigns to communicate with our target audiences, which we did expand to include two new groups that through sentimentality studies done by our governing agency showed us that Gen Z and millennials felt safer traveling mid pandemic. So, we increased our target audiences to include those groups by using established and affordable methods. So, our usually 30 page marketing plan was condensed down to one thing because we just didn't know what we were going to be able to do, if anything. And so, we did so with a budget that amounted in the end, thanks to a very generous subsidy from the city of 108,000, with a budget of 488,870. And at the end of Q3, we have received 67% of our forecasted income and are right on track with expenditures at 73%. 2021 marks the 25th anniversary of tourism being independent of its former home under the Chamber of Commerce umbrella. As such, we wanted to commemorate the year in a befitting fashion. Our first anniversary project was, is called Love Letters to NAC, which are compiled letters from those who have found a home here in NAC or hold a special place in their hearts for Nacogdoches. We've been pulled off of our targeted publication date in order to get as many letters as we could, but we're currently in the final design stages. And the book will be published and sold at the Charles Bright Visitors Center in the next couple of months. In March, we celebrated Mr. Bright's birthday, Charles Raymond Bright, for whom the Visitor Center is named, by launching our new Bright Star Award, which awards individuals and businesses that advance tourism efforts in Nacogdoches. And recipients so far include the Cottage Wine Bar and Bistro and Taylor Bradford from Front Porch Distillery. In an effort to answer the call for safe sanctioned events, Visit Nacogdoches staff built out the model which allowed us to turn our airport into a drive-in movie. The first event was in October with a showing of Oh Brother, Where Art Thou?, which was free as it was in partnership with the library and their Big Read grant. After Thanksgiving, we showed one Christmas movie per weekend and charged admission. The Civil Air Patrol Cadets sold concessions, weather and daylight savings eventually put an end to the movie season in February. The movies were a success on several fronts. They allowed us to partner with the library to advance one of their very important annual programs in the Big Read. And it also brought public awareness to the airport, which many do not realize that we have. And if they did know that we have it, they weren't aware that it is a city owned asset. And also to the Civil Air Patrol Cadet Program. This new awareness at the airport has already led to DUDAT barbecue being scheduled to be hosted there and possibly a regional truck and tractor pull competition. The timing with the announcement of the aviation degree from SFA was advantageous as well. We plan on bringing back the movies bigger and better than ever. As the past slide represents, it cost us about 6,800 to put on and the profit that we cleared was 13,887. We actually cleared more than that and we donated some of that to the Civil Air Patrol Cadets. And we used that money. That was our seed money for the Full Moon Summer Concert Series. So, our usual 50 mile outer radius focus shifted to a more community forward approach due to the pandemic. We became one of the weekly contributors to the Chamber of Commerce Stakeholder Calls and we introduced our legacy line of merchandise, which include My's Department Store shirts, Kennedy Jeweler shirts, Born in NAC merchandise, which includes shirts and baby lait sets. And upcoming designs will be Case and Monk and Bright Coop with permission pending on both of those. They've been very popular and we've had several reorders already. We formed and nurtured new relationships with generous sponsors as well as alternative service partners. We're in the works of outfitting local RV dealerships with that have lounges, standalone poster and brochure stands, which we will keep stocked. Due largely to the generous subsidy provided by the city as well as the generosity and kindness of our partners at. kindness of our partners at Hancock Advertising, who waived fees and cut corners for us everywhere they possibly could, we were able to maintain not only our print presence, but some highly-valued grandfathered insertion rates as well. We trimmed over forty thousand dollars from our marketing budget and forged cooperative marketing opportunities with the Chamber of Commerce, the Texas Forest Trail Region, as well as other area destinations such as Visit Tyler and Visit Palestine. Those were our insertions. We kept Texas Highways, Texas Monthly, Sawdust, and the Texas State Travel Guide. And then the following slides are examples. We have examples of our third-page runs and our full page. We were very mindful to look at our representation, our visual representation, in the photos that we used to make sure that we're including people of color and making sure that our language was socially responsible in a time we didn't want to give the misinformation that we were putting money ahead of people's safety, that we wanted people to travel as they felt comfortable and to know that Nacogdoches afforded them a safe place to land. We made use of our downtime to make improvements on our infrastructure and value proposition for our lodging partners. This included increased use and promotion of our Visit NAC app, creation of private Facebook groups, calendar and CMS backend training, and matching up properties with events as they came back online to create package deals. And this is generally, just general housekeeping, our requests for information by mail. We're just under two thousand, and there's a breakdown there. If you ever wanted to go back, it's always interesting, I think, to see what draws people to Nacogdoches, and that this provides a very detailed breakdown. And that doesn't take into account the number of downloads of our information as well. That's just what we mailed out. We had almost a hundred thousand website, unique website visits, with well over eighty percent of those visits coming from new visitors, and that's what the blue and green pie chart shows. The blue are new visitors. We currently have eighteen hundred app users. The Visit NAC app populates data from our website, so you can build out and share your itinerary, and it saves across platforms. So changes that you make on the website or on your phone will be available on the other. And our hope is to, as funding starts to come back, we can increase the service level of our app package. The next level contains a technology called augmented reality, which would, for about a thousand dollars per historic site, you could open up the camera in your Visit NAC app and point it at CBTX and take a picture of Amelia currently in front of CBTX, but it would turn into the Stone Fort. So it's pretty cool, but it's pretty pricey. And it's one of those things that the price is cut if you can have them come out at one time and do all of it. So it's not like, you know, onesies, twosies, kind of have to be all in. So our hope is to be able to grow our app. Social media continues to be strong for us. This year, we've contracted with local and regional influencers for added value, and we plan to do more of that with a primary focus on growing Instagram. We also have a blog and hope to add a podcast before the end of the year. Each week, Ashley Morgan, our Creative Content Director, pours laboriously, languishes over creating the what's happening. She really does give it just such great attention to detail and makes sure that it is as inclusive as possible, and she pushes that out every week. And the monthly version of it is also published in Around the Town Magazine, and she's even taken it a step further, completely on her own, and during SFA orientation, she has a special SFA student parent version. So Ashley is amazing. And every, excuse me, every month, we put the monthly version in posters in the lobbies of all of our hotels. We seized the opportunity for a free online store through our Facebook page. The items that are ordered in our online store are printed on demand and mailed out from the third party. It allows us to test-market different designs, as well as have special offerings that are just not cost-effective enough for us to maintain a physical inventory of. In late 2020, I came before you to amend the scope of our work to include hosting events as well as to assume the lead role in the permitting of special events for the city. So staff revised and revamped the entire special events permitting system, and it is now housed on our Visit NAC website. And just this past weekend, we were able to successfully transition through the JC's Freedom Fest. We've already had one Full Moon Concert. On July twenty-fourth, we'll be having another, and we've been able to successfully orchestrate monthly food truck events. And in light of the recent renewed spirit of collaboration between the city leadership of Lefkine and Nacogdoches, we're in the early stages of scheduling a tourism summit called Reach Across the River. It's going to be on August the ninth, and it will be a tourism summit with key players from each community joining forces to combine efforts and funds to best market and promote our region, as well as our respective destinations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. This is not an item that's going to be voted on tonight, but if anyone in the audience would like to make a comment, you're welcome to come forward. Thank you. Ms. Amelia?
Me first. Thank you so much for that presentation. You know, I totally understand the economic and other benefits that come with tourism, but it also has been really nice personally, and just to see the community-focused events, the Next Snack Friday and the Full Moon Concert. That's been, and it's nice to see that the drive-in movies are coming back. It's been really fun to attend those events with my family, and it's been great. It's been a sort of a source of pride for me with Nacogdoches, and I have friends from Austin coming into town. I tell them, oh, yeah, well, we do this thing. It's called Next Snack Friday, which is also a super cool name. The What's Happening calendar, I love that, and I also think that Ashley is amazing. And it's a super smart idea to put it in hotel lobbies, too, I think. How often, going to hotels and available beds, how often do we have an availability of beds problem? Do you know?
We typically have online seventy-eight percent of our total inventory. So we rarely are full, rarely if ever are we at a hundred percent of those eleven twenty-two beds. To date, even considering in the ice storm, you know, that was when we started to see availability issues. But it might not always be where you want, the property that you want, but we certainly do, you know, we have available beds.
Okay. And then the statistic you mentioned, that less than half of the short-term rentals, by that I'm assuming you mean like Airbnb's and the like?
Airbnb, VRBO, HomeAway, those, yeah.
Is that normal for less than half of them to be within the city limits for rural areas?
I think it varies, just to the community and the offerings. We just happen to be a county that is very picturesque, and people own more land and property, and so they have more opportunity, I think, to take part in that short-term rental. I've been working in tandem with Elena Chafin to work on making sure that those properties that are, that do fall inside of the city limits are remitting both their state and local property tax, because it's not a tremendous amount of money, but it levels the playing field and it is more revenue out there. But that is, you know, just in the course of this meeting, somebody could have signed up to, you know, to host a short-term rental. So it's something, it's very slippery, and it's hard to get a hold of.
Thank you, and thank you, and your staff, all of your work.
I failed to mention, our latest hotel occupancy statistics are for the month of May, and we're at fifty point four percent occupancy. And for reference, the average in the U.S. for the month of May was fifty-three point four. So we're faring very well.
Thank you. Ms. Malinger?
How many volunteers do we have with us?
Mike?
Sorry, just...
Probably twenty or so.
Twenty, yeah. I think, yeah, that's a nice thing to actually, you know, share, how many people are engaged in tourism in our...
I will tell you, when I came here in 2017, it is rare in these days. Most CVBs are business model only, so they are group sales, and maybe they'll have a standalone kiosk that's unmanned, and there's twenty-four-hour access. It is virtually unheard of to have a visitor center, and much less have one that is open seven days a week. So we have a very precious commodity in the visitor center that we have.
And that's actually one of the reasons I asked that question, because I have been so impressed coming and seeing how we interact with visitors and also seeing how many of them, I mean, just in my short time, Mike, when you're, he's trying to instruct me to be a volunteer, but just in our short time, I heard several people say, okay, we're going to move here. Isn't that right? I mean...
We get it every month.
How many a week do you have that either say, I just moved to town, or I'm going to move here? Can you give me a guess?
Obviously, several a week.
Several a week. That just is very impressive. It's a real positive statement for what you all do, but also for our city and all it has to offer. So thank you.
I think it's a great indication and reflection. There's a model, and Larissa is familiar with it as well. It comes from a woman named Maura Gast, who is the Executive Director for Visit Irving, Texas, and she says that when you've built a place where people want to visit, you've built a place where people want to live, and when you've built a place where people want to live, you've built a place where people need to work. And when you've built a place where people need to work, you've built a place where business needs to be, and it all starts with that initial hello. So I'm very literal when I say that this is a piece of the puzzle, and Brian Bray and Parks and Rec and Community Development has a very strong piece. Chief Seavey and Kiplinger, they have very, we all have our pieces of this puzzle, and when everybody is able to do their job to the best of their abilities, that is when Nacogdoches shines brightest.
Thank you all for shining.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Sherry?
Yes.
I have a question.
I was almost there.
On one of the slides, and I think it was labeled, what brings people to Nacogdoches? And I think the top of the list was antiques. Is that a day trip or is that head in the bed?
It depends. You know, the trick is to tease them with the day trip and then convince them that there's more for them to see if they, you know, if they can wait around. Our biggest obstacle is that we have small-owned mom-and-pop shops that, when they stay open on a Saturday, then their weekend now becomes Sunday and Monday, or if they stay open on a Sunday, their weekend is now Monday or Tuesday. So invariably, we have weekly occurrences where we have to turn people away because there's just not a lot open. And it's not for, you know, no good reason. Everybody, you know, not everybody can afford the overhead of keeping staff to keep their place open seven days a week. But the trick is to maybe stagger our hours so that a little bit is open collectively. So I think if we can find that groove of communication and maybe share some resources, we can cover that stopgap.
Is that seasonal? I mean, for antique visits?
We haven't found it to be seasonal. Our biggest co-op that we take part of is the Sale on the Trail, which takes place from Natchitoches, Louisiana, all the way through to Nacogdoches along Highway twenty-one. So that, in a sense, is seasonal, but we get people every day, especially as the Fredonia Hotel with its mid-century modern design. As that gets more press, we get more and more people coming here to find things specifically from that era. The Nacogdoches cigar bar has mantiques, is what they call it now. So that has become increasingly popular as well, and the Fortney Home is getting great attention on Mound Street.
You mentioned souvenir sales. Has that, I like souvenirs. I like baseball caps and T-shirts with a lot of writing on it.
Are you hinting?
Is that a popular item within CBB?
It is, and, you know, it's a double-edged coin sword. I don't know, it's something. But Jerry Larrabee, who maintained Heart of Texas forever, really always covered the souvenir basis, and she was finally able to retire, which, yay for her, but that has really left a hole. So we sell, we sell items at our front counter, and we are so blessed that people support us. I think we've even seen like a ten thousand dollar increase in our gift item sales. But we never want that to be our primary purpose. We want to support businesses. So if anybody was looking for a job, we need a souvenir shop.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much.
Agenda Item Six C, receive an update regarding COVID-19 for our chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Keith Kiplinger, your Fire Chief, without any technical difficulty on my PowerPoint for the first time in many months. Very proud. I didn't even have to have any help from our fantastic IT department. So tonight, I'd like to just give you another update about COVID. We've been doing these off and on for the last eighteen months or so, and sort of just give you an idea of where we're at, and certainly get any feedback that members of council or the public may have with regard to our efforts to battle this pandemic in our local community. And so we will start with some facts. The state of Texas estimates that we've had five thousand two hundred six cases of COVID in our community since the beginning of the pandemic. We know that that number is low. We know that testing was difficult to get to in the early months, in the first weeks and months. We also know that a lot of our friends and neighbors had COVID symptoms but didn't go to the doctor. They lost taste or smell. So that number is probably fifty percent of the real number, sixty percent of the real number, seventy percent of the real number of the people that have had COVID in our community. We know that we've had a hundred seventy-four deaths in Nacogdoches County from COVID. Again, I stress that these deaths were deaths that were reported by local physicians as their patients, our friends and neighbors, that died of COVID. And I have a great deal of faith in that one hundred seventy-four number. This is not coming from some state official or some federal official. This is our local doctors that sign those death certificates and the people that we eat lunch with and we're around and we go to church with every Sunday. So currently, the state estimates that we have twenty-six active cases throughout the county, and we have absolutely no idea how many new cases per day we're recording. And I will show you why, if you'll bear with me. This is the daily cases with a twenty-one-day trend line going back to last March. If you will look to the far right, you will see a precipitous spike, and in fact, it shows that we are trending higher than we have ever trended in Nacogdoches County, that we have the most COVID cases. that we have the most COVID cases that we've had, more than last July and more than in January. That is not real. That is not the case. Uh, DSHS has emailed us back and has sent us, and absolutely not, we did an audit, and we found all these are backlogged cases from some many, some maybe a year old. Uh, these are backlog cases that they dumped into the database on a date certain, on the day they identified them. So where you see those long spikes, that is simply the results of an audit that went all the way back to the beginning that, that put somebody with COVID in a different county because maybe they got a test in Tyler, and they assigned them to Smith County. Maybe they were, for whatever reason. And that, those numbers are all out of our control and have been since the beginning. The Department of State Health Services manages that. But this spike is not, is absolutely not real. And I'm gonna show you how we demonstrate that. So if you look at the, go to the left, and if you look at the kind of the bubble, um, that's last July. We had kind of last June going into July, we had a, we had a real surge. Then we had another surge that came kind of at the end of December, following the holiday season, that we knew was gonna happen. And if, as, as we go get to the hospital data, you'll be able to just, just remember those two bumps and then look at what we're seeing today on the daily cases. And then look what we're seeing in hospitalizations and how those don't mirror. So this is quite accurate. So this is our estimated active daily cases purported by the same state agency. So you see last June and July, you see this big bump. You see the December into January big bump. And our active daily cases have not had any kind of a surge, any kind of a bump. Their numbers are looking quite good. I estimate that our daily new cases are four to six, which is a very solid, good number, probably. Um, there's, again, there's no way for us to know because that data goes straight to the state. They report the data back to the public, and, and we get the same reports the public does. But when you look at the estimated active cases, uh, done by formula by DSHS, that's where we're at today. Now, general bed hospital usage. Our high was in January with forty-six beds among our two hospitals with COVID nineteen patients. Today, we're at four. So we're using four COVID beds. Again, that January spike where we saw the estimated daily cases was really high, it corresponded to the hospitalizations. If you go back to the left again, in July, there was a, there was a little more gradual peak in hospitalizations back last July, but you can see that as well. So that green line at the bottom is those COVID hospitalizations. The blue line is the total hospitalizations in our community. You will also see that there are days where the number just really drops. That's a day that the data didn't get reported for one or both hospitals. That those just really severe spikes going down is just a lack of reporting for one reason or another. So our ICU bed usage had a high of eighteen for several days back in January. That was really concerning primarily because we only have twenty-two ICU beds that are staffed on a daily basis among our two hospitals. And so when eighteen COVID patients are in those beds, um, there's not room for a heart attack, a car wreck, a stroke, something like that. Today, we have three, uh, COVID hospitalizations in the ICUs among both hospitals. And we have been down to zero in the last number of days. So, so we're teetering between sort of zero and, and three, zero and four for the last several weeks. So we're really, while it's not perfect, it's incredibly good where we are. So where are we at? So we have, there's fifty-four thousand four hundred people over the age of twelve in Nacogdoches County. We have administered a little over thirty-nine thousand vaccines, um, to date. Twenty-three thousand four hundred people have gotten at least one dose. Another, almost twenty thousand have been fully vaccinated, which means they either took Johnson and Johnson or they received both doses already of Moderna or Pfizer. These numbers do not reflect what the federal pharmacy retail vaccination program pushed out. So the federal government directly did a direct push to the retail pharmacies, Walmart, Kroger, CVS, Walgreens. These numbers don't reflect that. So some of the pharmacy doses came through the state allocation, uh, early on, a relatively small number. But, but then the federal government did a direct push to those retail pharmacies. That's not reflected in our numbers. So I don't have visibility on, on, we know statewide how much they pushed out. But we don't have really an idea, how many vaccines did Kroger give from that allocation? How many did Walgreens? So our number is somewhat, probably significantly higher than what we, what we see here, what's reflected here with regard to those vaccinations. And so, so what does that actually mean? That means that we are about forty-one, forty-two percent of our population, eligible population, has received one dose. And I will tell you that we are behind the state's percentage, uh, by a significant margin. The state's somewhere around fifty-seven or fifty-eight percent statewide. But if you will look at, as you go to the right in that chart, I captured all the counties around us, as well as Polk County, and we are still outperforming them with regard to vaccinations. When I say we're outperforming them, I don't need, mean that, 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 that the people giving the vaccinations are outperforming. What I mean is that our community is outperforming their communities, that we have more, a higher percentage of the population that's, that's, that's gone ahead and gotten the vaccines. And that's one dose. When we get to the second dose, where somewhere around thirty-six percent of our population has received both doses, uh, again, we're trailing the state, um, but we are ahead of all of our contiguous counties. Why I think it's important that we look at our contiguous counties is that while our size is not necessarily the same, our demographics are fairly reflective. When you go from Nacogdoches County to Shelby County, we're not dramatically different demographically and culturally. And so when you go to Angelina County, their population is almost a hundred thousand, um, total. But, but demographically and culturally, we're not dramatically apart. And so, um, certainly, we are not where we would like to be with regard to vaccines. We would like to be, uh, we would like to have vaccinated more people. But when we went into this, we made a very specific, we, we very intentionally decided that our goal was gonna be to provide everyone with all of the information they needed to make an informed decision at their level, and also to provide, to make sure the vaccine was available. We're still working on the first, uh, making sure that we're pushing out all the information we can, making sure that we are providing that information in English and Spanish, if necessary, and other languages. And we definitely have made vaccine available. Vaccines available every Wednesday from one to four at the Library and Rec Center. Why only one to four? The demand. If there was enough demand to be there Monday through Friday, eight to five, we would be there Monday through Friday, eight to five. If there was enough demand for us to go back to the Civic Center and do three thousand doses a day, we would go back to the Civic Center and do three thousand doses a day. So we have, we simply scaled our operation up based on the supply of vaccine. When the vaccine supply showed up, then we scaled up. And when the demand shrunk, we have, we have reduced our, our vaccine clinics. But that doesn't mean we're only doing half a day a week of vaccine clinics. Today, uh, our nursing students were at Carpenter Elementary and at the Malcolm Retro Technical High School in partnership with NISD. NISD notified, um, students and parents and offered bus transportation to students and their families to those school sites. And so we, we did a few vaccines, uh, in each of those schools today. And I'm happy to say that, 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 that we did a few, but we didn't have the, the response that we really wanted. We thought that running a bus route all over town, uh, would maybe give us an opportunity to pick up some students and some aunts and uncles and family members and whatnot. So far this summer, we've done every Wednesday at the Rec Center. Um, we set up a vaccine clinic at the Blueberry Festival where we were able to give a few dozen shots, but really able to talk to a lot of vaccine hesitant people about why they were hesitant and provide them information to think about. And maybe that'll, that'll change their, uh, outlook on the vaccine down the road. We've done, uh, clinics at SFA. We've, we're going at least once a week to Pilgrim's Pride. Pilgrim's Pride is very proud. They are, over seventy percent of their employees have been vaccinated. And so that, that happened, I guess, last week. And so we have been down there giving literally dozens and dozens of shots, uh, every week since April, March, April. We've done an NISD faculty and staff round where we took it to the schools before the faculty and staff left for the summer. So we took it to them. We also did one for, uh, Nacogdoches High School students at the high school. We've done two shot clinics for each of those. Um, we've given out information at NACSTAC Friday. We did a vaccine clinic at the Saint Paul's Christian Methodist Episcopal Church over on Greer Street. We did a vaccine clinic on Antioch Baptist, also on Greer Street. Um, the nurses were down at the E-12 Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, they've been to Witz Barber Shop, um, again, Pilgrim's Pride, Elliot Electric. And then last week, we spent the entire week with the Mexican consulate delegation at the North Street Church of Christ, had a vaccine clinic, um, all day, every day for that event. Also, we were able to hand out water to the poor people standing out in the sun for hours and hours and hours, and to provide them some relief. And the nursing students got to do a little, a little nursing and taking care of the, you know, the eighty-five-year-old that got there at four A.M., hoping to get an appointment and making sure that she could sit under a, under a tent, or that we could sneak her in for a vaccine and let her sit in the air conditioning. And so we were able to do, to do some of that. Upcoming, we're gonna continue doing the Library Rec Center every Wednesday. Through the end of July, we probably are gonna ask Brian Bray to let us extend that and continue that all the way until school starts back. We're working with SFA right now on their back-to-school plans, so we have international students that come in. Uh, we'll be offering a vaccine clinic for them, you know, their first day that they show up on campus. We're also gonna work with, uh, with them as they get, get ready for the back-to-school events with band athletics. Uh, tomorrow, we're doing a vaccine clinic, I think, for SFA Athletics again. Tomorrow, we're, we're at the Hope Food Pantry in the morning, and then we're doing our regular vaccine day in the afternoon. On Thursday, we're at Nettie Marshall and Nacogdoches High School. So again, trying to hit all four quadrants of town to make it as convenient as possible. That, that one on Thursday, the school district again offered to run bus routes, uh, to make that, that good. And then we have a plan to go to Uncle Doug's in Douglas, which is a restaurant that apparently is quite fantastic. And he's very excited, and I don't have the date yet for that. Uh, but we're gonna try, try to time it with his reopening post-COVID. So hopefully, it'll be a, a day where he reopens. Um, we will continue to offer vaccines as needed, um, as we go on. Our partnership with SFA School of Nursing, um, that you approved several months ago, was slated to, it was slated to expire July thirty-first. My intent is to try to extend that until, uh, probably the end of August, maybe with some reduced hours, so that we can try to continue those Wednesday vaccine clinics, try to continue our efforts with Pilgrim's Pride and making sure that, because they have a lot of churn in their staff, and they, they turn over a lot of employees. So as new staff members come to work down there, we can get them vaccinated. Um, as you, as you know, anywhere that, they have to work really in a close proximity to one another, just the nature of that, that business. Uh, and then also to be there for NISD and SFA as they, as they come back. So, so my intent at this point is to renew with the nursing students, uh, and the faculty, uh, through sometime in August. And then we'll have a fresh crop of nursing students that are free, um, that have to have clinical hours. And so, so as soon as SFA gets back, after the first couple of weeks and SFA's back in swing, we'll be back to having our, our free labor again, which will be wonderful. So I, I would like to say that the SFA nursing students, uh, the social work students and the Spanish-language student have been an absolute blessing. Uh, they all are just working their tails off. They all have incredible attitudes. And I think they're really excited, and I think they, I think that they love Nacogdoches more than they did in May, uh, just by getting out and seeing the town. Some of them have gone to the jail and given vaccines, and that opened their eyes. And one of the students said, I think I might want to do correctional nursing. Well, how great is that? Because I gotta think that that's probably an area of nursing that's underrepresented, right? So, um, so I think we have some real rock stars. And the faculty, uh, in the nursing school and the social work school have just been amazing to work with. With regard to outreach, I didn't put a lot about outreach on here, but the social work students and Spanish-language student are still working, uh, with Better Together. Um, we're got, we've got outreach, um, at all three Spanish masses, either next Sunday or the Sunday after, at the Catholic churches to try to, um, to try to just provide information about the vaccine. And we are, we are open to, to going anywhere. We've asked the, the four representatives of the four ministerial alliances that operate in Nacogdoches, which is a little complicated, but, but people that are in, members of each of them, we've asked them that if they're interested in having a vaccine clinic at their church, we'll be there. Uh, if you want to do it on a Wednesday night or a Sunday. At this point, we've reached the same thing that, that a lot of other people, a lot of other communities have reached, and that's vaccine fatigue, um, and vaccine hesitancy. And so, um, we're ready. We want to provide all the information that people need to make an informed decision, and we want to make sure we have the vaccine available. We have all three vaccines available at every clinic. And, uh, that's sort of where we are. And I'll be happy to step aside and let the public say anything, and then hear from you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this issue?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am. Come forward.
Is there like a calendar that has all the different dates and things, you know, for sure? A calendar with all the clinics on there?
A calendar with all the clinics?
Yeah, all the days and times.
We push it out constantly on social media and, and on, right. And you can call the Library or Rec Center, or you can call.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all, and great talk, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? City Council, Ms. Ballinger?
I just wanted to say, I, I continually am talking to people in other cities, and really, our city has been very creative. You have been very creative in, in, um, trying to get everybody vaccinated, and we all appreciate it.
Well, I, I'm gonna tell you, and I, I say this every time, we have an amazing team. SFA stepped up to the plate. Both hospitals, amazing, absolutely amazing. And, and now NISD has really stepped up to the plate, and they've really gotten engaged in offering bus routes and, and, uh, and I mean, our local community has just really, really did what we had to do. We've had some phenomenal volunteers, uh, at the vaccine clinics, and, um, Jan was one of them, more than once. And so, uh, no, I think that, that's part of what makes NAC great, is that we can all come together in challenging times and make things, make things sort of work out, so.
Something that I might say here, uh, Dr. Trujillo set up all this stuff.
Please come forward. State your name.
Dr. Trujillo set all this stuff up and set up the buses, but he also, uh, got into a select group. Only five schools and high schools in all of the state of Texas were selected, and we were selected.
That's Dr. Garmin. Uh, thank you, Doctor. Ms. Donison?
I, that, I know I've said this a lot over the last year, but thank you, and thank, and not just you personally, but the school district, SFA, um, all of the different, uh, um, nonprofit organizations that have helped with all of this. You know, I, I, I too have heard from, from people in a lot of other communities, and it has been a lot easier for people here to get vaccines who wanted it. Um, it has gone a lot more smoothly than it has in a whole lot of other places, and I think we're all very grateful for that.
From, from the very beginning, we had United Way passing out masks. I think Gary Lee still has a few pallets. No, I mean, we, you know, the whole community came together and stepped up. And I think that's, again, that's, that's what this is all about, so.
Ms. Pisha?
It's been a really incredible example of community collaboration across the board, um, with the city and the county, and I think ever, all of the players that you've mentioned, plus volunteers. And, um, it, it's just been super impressive from the very beginning, so thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. The, the percentages that you were giving us of the vaccinated population, that was countywide, right? Do you have city versus county numbers?
No. No, so the state does it on a county-by-county basis, and we, we have to get our, we have to get our data from, from that, so.
And then the, the next part, so we know nationally that there are particular, particular populations that are either hard to reach or have, um, low numbers of vaccinated people. How are we identifying those populations here? And what strategies are we employing to? I know you touched on outreach, but.
So we're, we're, we're really relying on our partnership with Better Together and with, um, the, the two social work students that we hired, and Dr. Cooper from, from the School of Social Work, to try to really focus outreach primarily in the Hispanic or Latinx and African-American populations. What we've seen from the data here is that, at least countywide, with regard to demographic data, we've had about seventeen percent refuse to give us their ethnicity on the form. We, we, we put it on the form, they don't put it on the form, we don't, you know, we don't. If they want to put unknown for their, for their gender, that's fine, too. I mean, we, we're trying to be as inclusive as we can. So with that seventeen or seventeen and a half percent that didn't include their ethnicity, so we just don't know. Each of, uh, in, in the African-American population, the countywide, we have about eighteen point two percent of the population, according to the Census Bureau, is African-American. We vaccinated about twelve point eight percent. So we're about six points off, something like that, five and a half, six points off. In the Hispanic community, about twenty percent of the population, according to Census, again, is, identifies as Hispanic. Um, we vaccinated about fourteen and a half percent. So again, we're about five and a half points off. Um, in the wider Caucasian community, Census says fifty-nine point two. We've done fifty-three point three. So again, about. So again, about six points off. So my, my take is the only thing we can do, trying to look through those numbers and trying to really figure out what that means, is that, that five and a half, five and a half, six points adds up to that seventeen percent that didn't tell us. And so I don't know who those people were that didn't tell us. So we could either be all running exactly percentage-wise even in our community or we could be very disproportionately going one way or another. So, so if all seventeen percent was identified as wider Caucasian, then that would take our number to somewhere around seventy percent, when we only have fifty-nine point two percent and out of the total population. So it's a little difficult to look at those numbers. I grind these numbers, trying to see if there's some way I can get a glimpse into what's going on. We are really, really focusing on the Hispanic community right now because we do, anecdotally, I don't think that one in five people that have come through the vaccine clinics have been of Hispanic origin. Again, that's me looking through my eyes. That's just using the context clues that I have and not try. I don't know how to say that as nicely as I can, but my gut tells me that that group is underrepresented. And I don't know why. I have my students that speak Spanish asking, when people come to get a vaccine from that community that speaks Spanish at home, asking why, why are people not coming? To see if we can get to some of those root causes. And, and if it's, if it's a lack of information, we want to get that information out. But we've done outreach at La Michelcana. On Saturday, the students were there. They do outreach at the library and the Rec Center where, where we'll have two or three students at a table, one always that speaks Spanish, that can answer questions, that can, and, and we're having some success in those areas. We had two or three outreach days at the Hope Food Pantry where we actually signed people up for tomorrow's vaccine clinic. So the people that are going to Hope anyway, when they come back to Hope, we'll give them a shot right in their car and, and, and hang out with them. So we're really trying to break, break through and to reach, reach those populations. And again, it's nationwide. There are some challenges. And there are people who are never, I have friends who say, I will never, ever, ever get one of those vaccines. And I have friends that in December were calling me saying, when can I get a vaccine? And so my friend group spans that entire gamut as well.
And I know to Ann's question, you, you mentioned that you guys blast the, you know, calendar, the, where you guys are going to be vaccinating and what days and times. You blast that on social media, right? Is there any other way to, that, that you guys are advertising?
So, so, so our Wednesday clinics have been in the newspaper about three times and they've been on K T R E numerous times as well. And I can't speak for what the, I, I don't know what the public information team is doing about other places. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I just don't.
Um, I, I was just going to say that I, if you guys are doing outreach.
They are on the Better Together website, I know.
Okay. But you know, that requires, and social media requires internet access and a computer. And so I'm, I'm just wondering if a calendar, a print calendar can be put together. And when you guys, I mean, I think going to, to churches is a really great idea. It's a safe space. I think using schools is a really great idea because it's a safe space. But maybe at first blush, somebody coming out of church or going into church might not, you know, be inclined to, to, to get vaccinated. But then if, if, if there's literature on or something that they can actually take home that says, okay, well, you didn't feel comfortable today, but you know, next week we have this going on at the school, it, it might be useful.
Okay.
Just diversifying advertising of it.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you. You made a statement, Ministerial Alliance. And is there an issue with communicating with the Ministerial Alliance?
So there's not one anymore. It's my understanding that there are four different distinct groups that represent the church community. And there is some overlap. And so we've talked to, I think that we've gotten the message to all four of those distinct groups that, because people that overlap those groups.
And, and the reason why I'm asking that, because looking at your list of churches, there's in the African-American Ministerial Alliance, there's thirty-two churches. Only one of them is listed on that list. And that was Antioch. Saint Paul CME Churches, they, they are not a member of it. But, and on the list of locations, demographics, the, like Eastwood Terrace, Oak Hill Plaza areas, not just that low-income housing, but all of the area around it, I didn't see any location that, you know, we have visited.
So we tasked the social work students with reaching out to churches to try to find churches that wanted to have a vaccine clinic. We also have reached out, the social work students, my understanding is, have already reached out to both Eastwood and Oak Hill to offer having a clinic onsite at the office. And so we're willing to go anywhere. People just need to, need to reach out and tell us that they, you know, that they have a group of people or that they think they can get a few people together. You know, we don't want to spend a day and a half sitting somewhere with one person comes to get a vaccine. But the vaccine is so readily available. We've been doing this for months.
Oh, I understand. I mean, I'm, I'm a member of Antioch, which was on the list. And it was mentioned that we started back in-person service. And all of our members that come back to in-person service has been vaccinated twice. But I, I really have a concern, like even what we consider the Mill Pond area. The Ministerial Alliance, there's four churches over there that's part of Ministerial Alliance. And I didn't see that on the list at all.
All they have to do is call and ask. We will be there. I know we're reaching out, we're working, trying to work through that list and, and trying to talk to all the churches. And if a church wants to be there and they think they can get a group of people together, we'll go.
I'll, I'll look into that for you. And like, one more, about Oak Hill Plaza and Eastwood Terrace, you have touched base with them? And was there someone that said no?
So I, I have, I have my meeting with Dr. Cooper tomorrow to find out where the social worker students are on going through that outreach list to make sure that, where we are. So I, I don't want to speak to that yet, but I, my understanding is that we've already reached out to them. But I have a meeting with him tomorrow afternoon to see where we are.
Thank you. Really, it's amazing the job that you're doing to reach out, to get everybody that's eligible. It's there.
I mean, we were at Carpenter Elementary that day, so that's, that's, you know, we're doing the best we can. And the school district did a great job, I think, of blasting that out to their, to their students and their parents that they, that they had. Again, the, the challenge is really now, there's not, there's just not demand for the vaccine. I think the people that really wanted it all got it by the, by the end of April or, or the first of May. And there were some people just beating our doors down to get it. And, and, and then the other folks, some of them just don't. And, and again, we are still vaccinating some people and it's still coming along. And what we're experiencing is the same as the balance of the country. So.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just have one small question. The, a lot of people in Nacogdoches left town to get vaccinated before we actually had vaccines. Are, are they counted in our, okay. It's just their residents, is that how it's?
So, so I, I would take you back to that DSHS chart that shows that we're having the highest peak of COVID new daily cases we've ever had. And so I don't have a great deal of faith in their data. And I have not for a very long time. For them to come in and dump literally hundreds of cases on us over the last two weeks is, is unconscionable to me because it, it raises this hysteria and, and it's not real. It's absolutely not real. I don't even have to look at, I don't even have to look at the daily case data or ask where it came from. I can look at the hospital data and tell it's not real because we know what happens. I mean, we've, we've been doing this long enough now. And so, so theoretically, those do include people that left. That number of a lot of people left town, there were a few hundred people that left town and went to Tyler or Longview or somewhere else. But there weren't, those weren't giant. That wasn't a giant number. We've, we did the vast majority of those thirty-nine thousand jabs, the vast majority. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The process you have in place couldn't be any better. Okay, Agenda Item Six D. Consider city board appointments for Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, Historic Land Preservation Committee, Mayor Committee on People with Disabilities, Nacogdoches Housing Authority, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Zoning Board of Adjustment. The mayor.
You handed it to me, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, then I'll just, I will list off our recommendations. So not in a particular order. Is this the appropriate way to do it? Is Jan shaking her head at me, yes?
Yeah. Each committee has to be done separately.
Yes, sir, okay. So Mayor's Commission for People with Disabilities would be Todd Petershager, Christina Ward, Suzanne McGuire, Jenna Redfield, Amanda Doherty, and Peggy Greer.
And you making that a motion, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion from the mayor.
Aye, I'll second.
We have a motion for, oh, Mayor Committee on People with Disabilities?
Yes, sir.
Todd Petershagers, Christina Ward, Suzanne McGuire, Dana Redfield, Amanda Doherty, and Peggy Greer. And we have a second?
Yes.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Thank you. Mayor?
Okay, for the Housing Authority Board, we would have the nominations of Peggy Greer, Barry Bell, and Benjamin Sullivan.
We have a, a motion for Housing Authority Bureau. Do we have a second?
Second.
We now have a second. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion is passed. Mayor?
Okay, a motion for the Historic Land Preservation Committee would be Judy Kugel and Perky Basel.
We have a motion from the mayor for Judy Kugel. Is that how you pronounce it? Okay, and Perky Basel. Historic Land Preservation Committee. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion for Judy Kugel and Perky Basel for Historic Land Preservation Committee. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion pass. Mayor?
For the Zoning Board of Adjustments, the motion would be George Middlebrook, Sarah Jones, and the alternate be Benjamin Sullivan.
We have a motion from the mayor for the Z B A Board, George Middlebrook, Sarah Jones, and alternate Benjamin Sullivan. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment? All in favor for the listed names, George Middlebrooks, Sarah Jones, Benjamin Sullivan as alternate, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion pass. Mayor?
For the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the motion would be Wanda Mouton, Alex Rank, and Larry King.
We have a motion from the mayor for C V B Board, Wanda Mouton, Alex Rank, Larry King. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for C V B, Wanda Mouton, Alex Rank, Larry King. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion pass. Mayor?
For the Planning and Zoning Board, the motion would be Ruth Carroll, Lily Foo, and Shannon Conklin.
We have a motion from the mayor for Planning and Zone Committee, Lily Foo, Shannon Conklin, and Ruth Carroll. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second for Planning and Zone Committee, Lily Foo, Shannon Conklin, Ruth Carroll. Any comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion pass. Do we have a? Okay. Yeah, let me get my. Madam Secretary, which one have we deliberate? Okay, Economic Development, okay. We are going to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551 dot zero eight seven. Councilor and I go into executive session. It is now six fifty-six, six fifty-six PM on July the sixth, twenty twenty-one. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551 dot zero eight seven, Councilor returned from executive session. It is seven oh four PM, July the sixth, twenty twenty-one, and there was no action taken. Meeting adjourned.